Where's Tammy? Oh.
Tammy's not here again?
Yeah.
Alright, I know some folks are still making their way in, but I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll call Ms. Widener.
Dr. Campley. Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Liggett.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Dr. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Dr. Weston. Ms. White.
Here. And we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent reflection.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Sorry, I had to restart. Alright, so with the reading of the mission statement, Ms. Sadler, would you mind? Dr. Sadler, I'm sorry, would you mind?
The mission of the Perkyomen Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you so much. 106, approval of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
移到
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. 1.07, special recognition. Dr. Sadler is going to sub in for Mr. McKinney this evening with Dr. Russell to do our recognitions while they are heading towards the front. Tonight, we are recognizing student leader, Skills USA competition, the swim team, the wrestling team, girls' wrestling team, track and field, our basketball team. And that is it. So we will go ahead, we'll call name, and then cookies and all of the things. Okay, good.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for coming out this evening to recognize quite a few students for different reasons. Let me begin by recognizing our food service department led by our director, Mrs. Ms. Kelsey Gartner. Homemade cookies for students from here on out. So each student that's recognized gets a cookie. And if they're recognized twice, they get two cookies, and they're very good. So thank you, Ms. Gartner and food service. They tend to be the highlight. Thank you, Dr. Sadler, for helping out this evening. Tonight, we recognize many of our students for several different types of outstanding achievements and accomplishments. We begin with a student leader. We are proud to begin tonight's recognitions with senior Sydney Anderson. Sydney, if you are here, and thank you, Sydney, would come up front? Sydney is a high-achieving senior, leading the math club, competing in math contests, excelling in advanced coursework, and studying biotechnology at North Montco. This evening, we are recognizing Sydney for founding the PV High School Women in STEM Ambassador Club, which has grown to an impressive eighty members. The ambassadors work to promote equity in STEM fields within our schools, encouraging younger students to see that everyone belongs in STEM. The club provides a supportive space to share experiences, express passions, and advocate for positive change in our school community. Impact upon Perkyomen Valley has been profound. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you. We're gonna get a picture after we recognize everybody. So you can grab a seat and then we'll head out. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Next, we move on to some of our North Montco Technical Career Center students and recognizing their accomplishments at the Skills USA competition recently. We are proud to recognize several PV High School students who currently attend North Montco Technical Career Center. Some of our students attend for half a day while the other half of the day is here. Other of our students attend full day at North Montco. They recently competed in the 2025 Skills USA District Two Leadership and Skills Championship. This is a regional event celebrating excellence in job skills and leadership. We begin with Sumil Desara, first in Megatronics. Sumil, I'm gonna shake your hair, you're gonna get a cookie. And then if you would stand next to Dr. Sadler and face out, that would be great. Stop right there. Excellent. Thank you. Next up, we have Robert Barden, first in power equipment, part of the recreational power equipment area. Is Robert here? Next, we have Darship Patel, placing second in the interworking in the area of internet technologies. Internet technologies. Aaron Leister placed third as part of cake decorating in the area of baking and pastry arts. Lana Youngman and John V. Vias both placed third as part of cyber security in the area of internet technologies. Congratulations to these two students. And in this particular group, our last student to recognize is Nolan Shelton, placed third in welding sculpture in the area of welding and fabrication. Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. The next two students, in addition to earning medals in the District Two Championship, they also went on and they competed and placed at the Skills USA Pennsylvania State Competition. Join me in congratulating Julia Di Toito, first place for advertising design in the regional competition and second place at the state level. Congratulations. And we have Connor Sax, competed in the area of electrical trades, placing first in industrial motor control in the regional competition and third place at the state level. Congratulations, Connor. We congratulate all of our award recipients and thank you for representing Perkyomen Valley at the Skills USA Competition. Congratulations once more. We'll get another picture afterwards, okay? Alright, let's shift to athletics. Lots to recognize here this evening. We have several student athletes to recognize for their performance on the court, the mat, the field, the track, and in the pool. Swim team, we begin by congratulating our PAC champions in swimming led by Coach Ross Buckwalder. Is Coach Buckwalder here? Excellent. Claire Majes, a junior, captured the individual PAC championship in the 200 freestyle with a time of 1:53.68. Excellent, Claire. Congratulations. Claire also qualified for her first trip to the state championships, where she competed in both the 200 free and the 500 freestyle. Claire then teamed up with junior Olivia Sellers. Olivia? And Maya Kepley, along with Rachel Minnery. They went on to win the 400 free relay at the PAC championships, finishing with an impressive time of just under 3:42. Excellent. Good job. Congratulations. We're excited to have all of these athletes returning next year to defend their titles. Congratulations, team. And Coach, congratulations. Nice job. Alright, let's transition to wrestling. We proudly recognize the achievements of junior Max Tancini, sophomore Luke Knox, and senior Carter Uker. Carter, congratulations. Luke, congratulations. Max, congratulations. Each of these young men earned a PAC championship in their weight class under the leadership of Coach Jared Dubs. Is Coach Dubs here tonight? You get to come up. You get a cookie, Coach Dubs, if you come up tonight. So, congratulations. Excellent. And assistant coaches Lou Fioravanti and Dylan Yipko. If you are here, please come up as well. Yipko? Sorry. So Max has surpassed 100 career wins for Perkyomen Valley, qualified for the state tournament three consecutive years, and now ranks second all-time in program history for total wins. Congratulations, Max. Luke achieved a third-place finish at the state tournament, the highest state placement for a PV wrestler since Bill Neal's state title more than fifty years ago. Way to go, Luke. Congratulations. And Carter, who will continue his wrestling career at Bloomsburg University, holds the school record for career wins with 142 victories and has also qualified for the state tournament three years in a row. Congratulations, gentlemen. You are an impressive group of athletes who have left a lasting mark on PV. Best of luck in whatever comes next. Thank you. And as you know, we've introduced girls wrestling. So this year, we offer congratulations to Coach Laura Ready. If Coach Ready is here tonight, please come forward. And junior Hayden Tashapi on making history. Congratulations. Way to go. Thank you for coming out tonight. Hayden is making history by capturing the first-ever PAC championship in girls' wrestling at the 136-pound weight. Hayden closed out an impressive season with a 16 and 9 record. Congratulations. Thank you for coming. Outstanding. Next, we move on to track and field. We proudly recognize junior Colin Sturgis, the 2025 Pennsylvania Indoor Track and Field Shot Put Champion. Congratulations, Colin. Colin secured the title with a personal best throw of 58 feet, 3.5 inches on his final attempt. Under the leadership of Coach Joe Petsko and assistant coach Tom Farney, if you are here, please come forward. Thank you. Colin has not only achieved individual success, but he's also inspired his teammates to take risks, try new events, and work toward growth both individually and as a team. Congratulations to Colin and to our coaches on all the successes you've experienced. Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Alright, and now we move on to basketball. Congratulations to the Perkyomen Valley High School Girls Basketball Team, the 2025 PIAA 6A state champions. A round of applause. Outstanding. Under the leadership of Coach John Russo, assistant coaches Samantha Pagel, Dave Rogers, and Matthew Newell, the team had a spectacular season, finishing with an impressive overall record of 30 and 3. The Vikings dominated the Pioneer Athletic Conference, posting a perfect 13-0 record and capturing their third consecutive PAC championship. They went on to claim their third straight District One title with a thrilling win over Garnet Valley and capped off their historic season by defeating Upper St. Clair in the state championship game. And they did defeat Upper St. Clair. This marks the first time in Perkyomen Valley history that a girls' basketball team has captured a state title. A remarkable achievement. And these young women have been playing together for quite a few years, so it's really been fun watching them over time. These athletes are an inspiration to their families, their school, and the entire PV community, and we are proud to honor them here tonight. Please join me in recognizing to begin our JV players guided by coaches Megan Johansson and Chris Henry. Coaches, if you're here, we would love it if you would come up. Players, we have... Megan, congratulations. Good to see you. Thank you for coming. Good to see you. Avery Carney. Ava White. Brenna Crowe. Brianna Lindsay. And Margaret Eppertinner. Eppert... Thank you. Our varsity team members include Lauren Binkowski, Hannah Evans, Megan King, Scarlett Lee, Grace Miley, Kate Nimmick, Gabriella Russo, Julia Smith, Rebecca Taylor, Lena Stein, who will be joining the basketball team at West Chester University next year and playing for them. Congratulations. And we have Grace Gabelby, Quinn Beddinger, and Bella Bacani, who each had a momentous year. They all eclipse the 1,000-point scoring record. Congratulations, ladies. Grace was named PA 6A State Player of the Year. A really impressive accomplishment. Grace, congratulations on that. Outstanding. Quinn and Bella were named PA 6A Second Team All-State. Congratulations. Again, very impressive. These three ladies will also be playing basketball next year at the collegiate level. Grace at Wake Forest, Quinn at the Naval Academy, and Bella at Thomas Jefferson University. What an impressive group of young athletes. And I continue to say, it really was a fun season and really so enjoyable. You brought entertainment to the community. You brought the community to the community. And you are role models for others to follow. Thank you for all of that, really. We will take a five-minute recess for some additional pictures out in the main lobby. Thank you to parents and friends that all attended. Yes. John didn't come up. Yeah, sorry about that. Coach Rousseau. Wait, I did mention them.
Or schedules such as the implementation of of full day kindergarten and as well as the population of students in non-public schools and charter schools and formats of that nature. So just a quick little overview of the 2017 report summary. So the recommended scenario in our previous report was option one, which predicted a which projected an overall decline of just a little over a thousand students. Or an eighteen point four percent decline over ten years. So you can see a decline was predicted across the board from K through twelve. There was talk of a potential increase in the twenty-five to thirty-four age cohort is generally the age which in which births are most births are most likely to occur. And potentially a rebound in birth predicted after a continual decline through twenty fourteen. And this line graph just just points out the overall, the gradual decline that we've seen in the last ten years in enrollment. And obviously also, you know, we were considering different different phenomenons now, I should say, such as obviously the pandemic playing a role in that as well. So which we obviously didn't see for the twenty seventeen report. So school district characteristics. The twenty twenty population of the Perkman Valley School District is just under thirty-nine thousand. And with the projected to projected to grow based on the DVR PC numbers to forty thousand two hundred eighty-nine. So this represents a about a three point four percent increase, which is kind of inconsistent. With the county, basically, the county's grown slightly quicker, but it's modest growth there. And and a similar, the county's projected to grow about five percent, as you can see from twenty twenty to twenty thirty. And these are Delaware Valley Regional Commission, Planning Commission projections that they do every several years. Twenty thirty through twenty fifty. And just here's the the birth act, the birthing totals annually for both the school district and the county by comparison. This goes back to twenty, this is from twenty thirteen through twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. What we do is we get the annual totals, but then we basically aggregate it to where it's consistent with a a school year calendar. So that makes it, that makes for an easy calculation into the the projections that we calculate there. And birthing data, birth date is available, about a little bit like a year behind. So it's, we don't quite have the twenty twenty-four numbers yet. These are the most recent. You can see it's generally been up and down since twenty sixteen and it's in the district, whereas it's been a little bit more of a consistent decline throughout the county. But you can see in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one school year for both for both geographies, you had a little bit of a spike during the the first year of COVID. Childbearing age females, this is another group that we look at just for the, just as potential factors in the impact that could have on enrollment in the long term. In our, the previous report, we predicted there might be, there could be an increase in those numbers. It's difficult to tell though, because you know, these are not cohort calculations, they're just, it's census data and as you can see, there's a twenty, there's a slight decrease in twenty-five through twenty-nine and the thirty thirty-four is going into twenty twenty. A slight increase is slated for twenty twenty-three, but those are just estimates. So those are, you know, the American Community Survey estimates, which is a five percent a five percent sample size. So that's, that's certainly not a concrete number. And also the the younger age cohorts as they as they increase, as you see, that could also be simply due to the the presence of our sinus college. And the school district enrollment by grade level. So the the top yellow line there just represents the total enrollment. Sit back, going back to twenty-five to twenty fifteen through twenty sixteen. So you can see a general, general decline, gradual decline and particular drop for the the twenty twenty to twenty-one, twenty-one school year. Not surprisingly due to the pandemic and that's been, as you can see with the grades divvied out, that's mostly due to a decline in the K through five grades, just with, you know, younger kids being pulled out of school and maybe, you know, homeschool or sent to, you know, another school. So that's not, that's been kind of a standard trend we've seen throughout the county and the larger, really the country, I think. And then other school enrollment. So this is going to cover kids who go to private school or who are who are in, you know, different charter schools and things like that. So there's, we pulled together a couple of data sets for this and none of, none of them are a hundred percent. That's their American Community Survey data from the census, which like I said, it's just, it's basically a five percent sample of the size. And you can see that there's a little uptick in twenty eighteen. About a thousand seventy-five or fifteen point six percent of the students in the school, residing in the school district went to private school. And then that decreased to eleven point nine percent for twenty twenty-three. And we also are able to access the bus data. Of course, this is not, this doesn't paint the whole picture, because obviously if you're not going to be included if you are driven to school. But you can see the general, the general pattern is the same. It's, it's a little uptick in twenty-one, twenty-two. After the first full year of the pandemic and then slight decline from there. Then housing activity. So one of the key metrics that we we publish every several years is the number of school age children per housing type in both new and existing housing. And this is a critical data point for our, obviously our projections, but also useful in in calculating all kinds of different you know, different projections for different purposes. So we publish these in a larger report called Who Are Our Neighbors, which is on our website. But we're able to analyze the number of public, public school age children. As you can see, in single family detached, attached, multifamily. Divvied out by existing units and new units and and then to some extent, we can, we can kind of drill it down to the school district. But for the overall county, not surprisingly perhaps, you, the new new single family detached units are still the larger, largest producer of students at almost one student per household. And then existing single family detached are also larger producers there, but you can see single family attached is kind of catching up. And multifamily, as it typically is the case, is the, produces the smallest number of of students, which sometimes goes against the perceptions of, you know, how much apartment complexes produce in terms of students. And the Perkman Valley existing school district or the existing housing, point seven six students in the existing units. I think the new units were, the number was small enough that we couldn't quite drill down that number, but we have in our report will give the number for the, the region that that, that our schools district falls in. For the for the, for this type of data, the county is divided up into several different regions and we can certainly provide the numbers for the region that the school district falls in. So at least give you a little bit more of a specific number there. And the impact of multifamily units, larger multifamily units is generally been consistent the last several years. It's been a little bit of, a little bit of construction in the school district, as you can see within the last couple of years, additional units that were built, but they're generally producing, yeah, somewhere between fifty and sixty students per year. And the number of units built, to to some extent, this has been fairly consistent with the county. We're seeing, you know, leading up to COVID, there was a fair amount of construction going on in the county and the school district and that, you know, that nearly grinded to a, not quite a halt, but significantly less, especially after the first year of COVID. But then has started to climb back up into to pre-pandemic numbers, but it's still generally low comparing to the pre-pandemic years. So you're looking at an average of fifty-two units per year at this, this particular timeframe. And mostly single family detached, obviously, but some of the years attached housing is also prevalent. Here's just a map showing, this will be, this is in the report as well. Just where the units have been built the last ten years. So you can see there's some construction really concentrated in, well, some of it's Meadow Glen, age restricted units in in Skipac and then there were about forty-four, or no, there were about a hundred nineteen age restricted units built in the last eight years or so in the school district, almost all of them in Skipac Township. And then, you know, some, some concentrated in Lower Frederick and most of your attached housing was confined to the the boroughs of Trap and Collegeville. Then there's the overall impact of potential housing. So we also analyze what's coming down the pike, not just, not just what's been sold or what's been built. So you're looking at several different potential projects, the Hugo Track, the Landis Track, Perkman Valley Airport, potential redevelopment. Producing, I think about, projected to produce about ninety-six kids, I think that adds up to. And then we got some, some, these are all either under construction or they're in, going through the land development process. So they're a little bit, you know, closer to that, to that point of either being, being built or about to be built. And then the bottom is, you know, are still under review. So there's, those aren't quite as, as guaranteed, I guess we should say. And it was just an overview of potential housing developments. So you can see there is quite a bit of, you know, a good bit of construction slated for the school district. It's certainly it's certainly got, you know, a lot of potential activity going on as well. Just a matter of you know, what, what that will build. I mean, additional households doesn't, don't necessarily mean sort of a consistent increase in students. It just depends on what's being built there and and where. The impact of existing housing sales, I think this, we're just going to adjust this chart here, but yeah, really, it's the, what we calculate here is twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, we look at who has of the units sold, existing units sold in the district. We look at who has moved as a result and who has come into the district, district as a result. Sometimes that has produced a, a loss of students and sometimes, sometimes that produces a net gain. It's it can sometimes seem a bit random. And in twenty twenty-two, housing sales led to a thirteen a net loss of thirteen students for twenty-two and twenty-three. And then twenty twenty-four, just last year, there was a net gain of six students. So just another, another metric to to go by in terms of understanding how the, the enrollment could grow or contract. And the existing housing sales overall, you can see as mostly concentrated, a lot in Lower Frederick or along just off Springmount Road. A lot in the boroughs as well and also especially in Skipac along, not near the Biltmore Estates. So quite a bit of sales in the last eight, nine years. And now, and we'll go over the district enrollment projections. Now that we've painted a picture of the district.
Okay, um, we put here on these charts, a little comparison, and we sort of touched upon this already. Looking at the prior study from twenty seventeen compared to the actual enrollment now. So our predictions were not perfect, but we were, we were headed in the right direction. There, you were outpacing actually our prediction. So that's a good thing. We, we take these numbers of your current enrollment and we look at the progression rates from year to year. And that factors into our predictions for the future. So to, to look at this, we looked at the, a couple of different ways of calculating the future enrollment. Generally speaking, a ratio here that is greater than one shows an increase in class size. So the, the table, like, there really isn't the right place for me to point this, is there? But, um, so the class of, you know, kindergartners from twenty sixteen to seventeen had a birth to K ratio. So that's the number of students who were born while having parents living in this district to when they enrolled in kindergarten has a ratio of point seven nine. But then when enrolling in kindergarten the next year, rather in first grade the next year, sorry, that has a growth of one point one six five. So that those, that class size increases. And so generally speaking, you're seeing increases, had been seeing increases, large ones from birth to K and K to one. And we look at these averages each, each year and try to come up with what the best average number to use to, to use against your future enrollments would be. But the ones, the one thing that stuck, stood out here to me is this year's full day kindergarten ratio. You have a higher number. And I'm, I am going to make an educated guess and say that this will continue. You have a higher number of students enrolling in full day kindergarten, which makes sense. You, you're offering a, a longer school day to these people. You're capturing more kids who might have enrolled elsewhere earlier on. And you'll have a higher ratio of birth to kindergarten and a slightly lower ratio presumably going forward of K to one. So we used that second line of averages. That four-year average of those numbers highlighted in blue with a higher birth to kindergarten enrollment ratio. And, and gave you three different options, one with higher kindergarten enrollment and one with lower. You know, historic kindergarten enrollment. Option one uses a, a future birth estimate that is unchanged. We didn't really see anything in our research that pointed toward higher birth rates, but we included higher birth rates just as a point of comparison in option two. Option three goes back to that unchanged birth rate plus the housing adjustment. All of those pending and underway housing, construction projects that we know are coming. Using those ratios of numbers of students by housing type to think about how many housing units will be coming online and how many students might be added to your roster going forward. So a little bit more about full day kindergarten. We did some research for a different school district enrollment study to try to quantify what the impacts to future enrollment might be. Given a shift to full day kindergarten. So just, I thought that it might be interesting to include these numbers, looking at school districts that have recently switched to full day kindergarten and what enrollment in kindergarten looked like prior to full day kindergarten starting and after full day kindergarten starting. And then also the, the change that might have happened to enrollment in first grade as well. So generally speaking, the enrollment increase in kindergarten is about twenty percent. And that the decline in people enrolling in first grade for the first time declines a little bit as well. So just information for you to have, you know, handy if it is interesting or useful. So back to the, the options, all of the options continue to present a decline in enrollment. The full day kindergarten addition to the estimates slows that decline somewhat. But, but overall, we still are seeing a decline in enrollment in the school district. Right now, there is a total of four thousand six hundred eighty-four students across the board. Using the base future birth estimate that unchanged birth rate and not putting any other factors into the equation. We are seeing a total decline in the next ten years to closer to forty-two hundred students. We also included here what that might look like if you rearrange the grades as you have been discussing and having a grade five, six center and a grade seven, eight center in the place of the two middle schools. So those totals are included here as well. Option one B, that base future birth rate with full day kindergarten added into the mix still has a decline, but the, the future total enrollment in the district is four thousand two hundred thirty-four students. The higher future birth estimate, again, I don't really think is, is going to be that much of a factor. The decline would continue here even with higher birth rates. And with full decay, again, that decline would slow somewhat. Option three, I think is your most likely scenario. This is the, the same base future birth estimate. With the housing adjustment included, that would bring the future enrollment through the district to forty-two hundred students in about ten years. And with full day kindergarten added in, brings it to closer to four thousand two hundred fifty students. In conclusion, if trends stay the same, we see a decline in enrollment of up to about nine and a half percent over the next ten years, but that decline would slow somewhat with the addition of full day kindergarten. I do think that you will capture more students who might have enrolled elsewhere and then potentially stayed elsewhere with the full day kindergarten offering. But it, you know, it's only the first year, so it is a little early to know for sure. You will potentially have a, a small blip in enrollment due to those pandemic era birth rates increasing a little bit. So that would affect your enrollment, I think, starting with the twenty-two, seven, twenty-eight school year. Housing construction is modest, but will potentially bring up to around another hundred students over the next five to ten years. And I do think that, you know, as David was mentioning, you will see additional students coming in here and there due to home sales and more students moving into some of the newer apartment complexes that are being built. I'm happy to answer any questions any of you might have about this, this research and these projections. And thank you so much for having us tonight.
I'll open the table to questions if there are any. I have one.
Sure.
I'm wondering if, I know that a lot of the slides focused on new construction, home sales. I'm wondering if there was any analysis done in home resales of aging population occupants? Houses that are currently in the district that are single family, that have non-school age children that would be moving out. At, you know, basically like a, a district turnover of those families.
Uh, yes, we did do that a little bit. It was, it was a mixed result. It's here, here on the right. Some, some years, those home sales showed a decline in I, and we don't know how old the people are who are moving out of a given unit. But what we do do is we look at, we compare the addresses on the counties, we have the county records of all of the homes that have sold in a given year. We compare those addresses to the student roster prior to that year and the student roster after that year. So that's how we come up with these estimates of that, that last line in the table, the net change in students from sales activity.
So that's where that information is from. Okay. Cause I just was curious, once, you know, you're right, sometimes it could be they've graduated from high school and now there's a resale, but then some folks stay in their home, you know, throughout college years. So.
Right. Or, you know, maybe some people just move homes within the district. There, there are many scenarios. So, so there's a small amount of change that, that is happening from existing homes being resold.
Thank you. Any other questions that anyone has? Thank you for coming out to present.
Thank you so much. I will note that we are working on a final report to, to have available to all of you, but we are still cleaning up some of the text, but the tables and the data will basically be the same.
Thank you. Thank you both.
So we'll stick a pin in that momentarily and move to the student liaison's report from Ms. Tremba and Mr. Lees.
Good evening. We hope you all had a good weekend and are excited for the week ahead. With the end of the school year approaching, our students are involved in lots of activities that we'd like to highlight and events that are upcoming that we'd like to acknowledge. First, we'd like to congratulate PV Track athletes Colin Sturges and Ava Flicker for their great performances at Penn Relays. This is a really prestigious meet and Colin Sturges came in fourteenth place for the javelin throw. And Ava Flicker came in seventh for javelin. Ava also recently broke the school record in javelin with a throw of one sixty-four five, earning her a first place ranking in the state and a fourth place ranking nationally. Congratulations to both of them and we thank them for their hard work. And we'd also like to recognize our boys lacrosse team who recently qualified for PAC playoffs. Those playoffs begin tomorrow and they face Springford at home at seven PM. We'd like to wish them the best of luck and encourage the community to go out and support them.
We would also like to thank some of our musical theater students for representing PV in Times Square for the Broadway celebrates Earth Day event and to congratulate them on their stellar performance. Finally, we'd also like to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Cook last month, who was an integral part of our PV community. And we ask everyone to keep him and his family and their thoughts and prayers as we grieve this loss.
Thank you both so much. So that's two point oh three, President's Report. I am going to actually defer until after the Superintendent's Report. And with that, two point oh four, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Ms. White. I would like to begin by recognizing Claire Tremba. Claire is graduating this year. I'm not sure if you'll be at our June meeting, but I want to wish you well in your next phase of the journey. Congratulations. She will be attending the University of Pennsylvania. Very impressive as an undergraduate to get in. So I wish you lots of success, Claire. And thank you for your service to the board. So let me begin by showcasing just a few students. We did see a lot of students showcasing earlier this evening in the meeting. I then want to just review a couple of the key takeaways from the study that was just presented to you, but I'm not going to be redundant and then talk about this proposed grade level realignment and where we are with that in our thinking. Some of the language in the presentation this evening is updated and looks a little different based on our new and updated comprehensive plan. These are our shared beliefs and shared views. So showcasing our students, we recently had a, we attended a legislative breakfast at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. And one of our students spoke.
I'm honored to speak with you this morning, not just as a student, but as someone who is deeply shaped by the many possibilities public education makes real. Public education has given me more than academic knowledge. It's given me a place to discover who I am and what I care about. It's where I first realized that my voice could matter and where I was encouraged to ask the hard questions and learn how to listen just as much as I speak. Through student leadership, classroom discussions and community projects, the system has taught me how to be engaged, not just as a student, but as a citizen. What makes public education so powerful is that it's built on the promise that every student, no matter their background, deserves access to opportunity. Public schools bring together a range of students to say, you all deserve to learn, to grow and to succeed. But that promise doesn't fulfill itself. It takes support from educators, from administrators and from leaders like you. When we invest in public schools, we invest in futures. We invest in critical thinking, creativity and compassion. And when we invest in the kinds of communities we want to build and the people we hope will someday lead them. I stand here today because of public education and because of the teachers who believed in me, the programs that challenged me and the community that supported me through both struggles and successes. Public education matters because it makes stories like mine possible. And stories like mine are only one of thousands happening in our county every single day. Thank you.
So Nora is a junior in our district. And she was invited to speak and share a few words on how public education has served her. And she did a really nice job. So that video clip will be in the Superintendent's Report. And here's a picture of our girls' basketball team. Again, we've gotten a lot of joy and excitement out of our team and really have appreciated all that they've displayed for our district. Very proud of the team. They were recently invited to tour the Capitol. And along with our state representatives that you see in the picture there, Representative Bradford Webster and Sharon. They were escorted and had a wonderful day in Harrisburg. So again, once more, congratulations to our girls' basketball team. All right. So the report, basically there were no real surprises for administration in this report. We did not anticipate or predict that the enrollment report was going to suggest over ten years, there would be this huge enrollment increase in the district. But it was a piece of the puzzle we felt necessary to make sure we had in place. We wanted to cover all of our bases and make sure that we were comprehensive in our review of the status of the district as we considered a really significant change for the district and discussed it. So some of the slides that So some of the slides that I've pulled out really focus on some of the key takeaways that Anne and David also focused on, birth patterns and what they look like in our district, housing, where it's happening in the district, and then the options considered, whether it's based on birth rates, birth rates and the implementation of full day K, higher birth rates, or birth rates, full day K, and housing. So you heard some of that, the combination of variables that are considered in these projections, and then what it looks like, options one, two, and three. None of them show a dramatic change. You can see there might be a slight increase or decrease from year to year over 10 years. None of them are dramatic. But it's important data and we felt it necessary to pursue that and incorporate it into our thinking. So where are we with the proposed grade level realignment? When we came to the board as an administrative team, they are here this evening, many of them, we asked the district whether or not it was maximizing its resources and most effectively meeting the needs of all students. That was the critical question that we brought to the board and requested from the board a continuation of conversations around this question. And our purpose was initially really around facility and space constraints, which still exist in at least one elementary school moving into next year based upon projections. And again, this is not based upon enrollments. I can't stress that enough. It is based upon how we operate and the students we are serving today. So that's counterintuitive. That doesn't make sense. That's the reality of where we are, though. Our operations, the students we serve, have changed over the years. Therefore, the use of our buildings have changed over the years. But those conversations about space constraints evolved into what's possible for our students. And as an administrative team, we really focused in on a vision of reimagining, reinvigorating, and really working to improve the experiences of our students and the outcomes. We have a more and more diverse, continually evolving population of students, and we want to make sure we're meeting their needs. We were also thinking about the idea of unifying students sooner than ninth grade. That was very appealing to us as an administrative team. We looked at the data. We shared, we had an increased number of kindergarten classes. We have an increased number of specialized classes or special education classes. And with those classes comes supplemental staff and resources that also require space in our buildings. We have space available at West and East. So these were some of the data points that we focused in on. And there's historical reference. This isn't the first time we've talked about grade level alignments or shifting what's happening with the facilities we have available to us. This, this slide was actually one presented previously and just showed in sort of a snapshot view what's happened and what sorts of conversations have occurred over the years as the dynamics of the district have shifted and changed. We recommended creating a five, six intermediate school out at West and a seven, eight middle school at East. And we also looked at early, an early learning center at Evergreen, really ruled that out pretty quickly. We talked about five, eight schools, and while there was some really strong support for that around the table, the administrative team could not be as supportive of the five, eight alignment. And we also talked about status quo, not doing anything. Feedback from the community, there was some really wonderful support. There were also some really important and valid challenges or considerations for us to think about. Number one, West is far. It is at the northern end of the district. And this, for our families, presented as a real challenge. And then we also talked about additional, the additional transition, which for some students will be really tough, and the splitting of siblings now among more schools. The potential decreased extracurricular opportunities for our students in seventh and eighth grades, where PIAA athletics and some of the other higher level music activities exist. And we considered some of those other options for what to do in response. So these challenges were heard. They're honored and they were seriously and thoughtfully considered as part of our conversations. We talked about the benefits and we had some, some families that were very supportive of unifying students, the efficiencies that we believe could be brought to special education programming, and actually a greater effectiveness in the outcomes for our students, the experiences of our students, the consistency with programming, some new and different ideas for fifth graders, and access to enrichment for seventh and eighth graders. So those are some of the highlights around the benefits. And this was a slide that we talked about. We really shifted from not only talking about space, where it's tight in some buildings and available, very available in others, we talked about how we could improve the experiences of our students. And if you do what you've always done, you get what you've always got. That kind of thinking also came into play. So where are we with the recommendation tonight? And I know that some people are really anxious to hear this. It is rare that an instructional administrative team, an entire team, supports an idea, an initiative, and this team did that. And I want to publicly thank them for their interest, their thoughtfulness, their dedication to these ideas and the legwork that they did behind the scenes, and many of them are here tonight. And they really invested themselves in the ideas around this grade level realignment. Somebody had mentioned recently in a comment that the majority of middle schools in Pennsylvania have a six, eight alignment. That's true. That's accurate information. There are some around us shifting to something different, but the majority do have that six, eight alignment. At the middle level is where we see the most challenge with achievement and growth on the part of our students. So one could ask, is that a variable coming into play or not worthy of consideration? This is where we have been challenged as a district the most to meet the needs of our students. It's at the middle level, grades six through eight. So again, how do we reimagine, reinvigorate, do school differently in the interests of our students and in positive ways that we believed would really pay off for them? And ultimately, I think it comes down to some readiness. And I don't know that we are at a readiness, and it took me back 20 years ago, Mr. Fountain might remember this, where a high school principal here in Perkyomen Valley presented this idea called block scheduling at the high school. And staff and community could not get their heads around it. They really, really struggled and were extremely unsettled by the idea. Fast forward 10 years later, we see lots of schools around us with block scheduling. 20 years later, here we are. 20 years later, it's very common. There are wonderful benefits to students with block scheduling, efficiencies, benefits to staff with block scheduling. But 20 years ago, when it was presented by a forward-thinking principal, we just weren't at a readiness for that. And so it was set aside. I think it may come back. And I would very much welcome conversations around block scheduling. But that too, in my view and experience, was an example of a community that was not at a readiness for that kind of change. It didn't happen. So at this time, my recommendation to the board is that we pause these conversations and this realignment of grade levels, what started out to be something very positive for students has ended up creating more challenge and feeling like there's lots more resistance than what we would like. That is not what we were pursuing. To the administrative team, again, I appreciate your thoughtful consideration and the efforts you put forth, your willingness to speak in public during some really difficult and challenging conversations. You did a great job there. And to the board, again, I thank you for your willingness to have the conversation and the honest feedback that you brought forward during those conversations. So for now, maybe we bring closure to that conversation and think about, what do we do next? We continue to reevaluate and look at our enrollment center facilities. Not only are there space constraints in some of our buildings, there will be major space availability too. So we can think about that. How do we maximize our resources and capitalize on what we have available to us? We continually strive to improve the experiences of our students and the outcomes. We are focused on specialized learners. That's a part of our comprehensive plan. It's an overarching goal. That never ends for those students who struggle. And we will continue to support transitions. We heard about that from some individuals, that transitions are challenging for their students. The vast majority of our students do well in transitions, but not all of them. And that's important for us to note as an administrative team so that we capture, extend that net, expand that net, and capture those students who do struggle and think about how we can avoid that. And then we continue to evaluate the transitions from elementary to middle and the social aspects that come with such a transition for our students. Again, we hear lots about that. So with that, I would take any questions or comments, but that ends my report.
I open the table. Okay, same note. Before we move on to the solicitors' report, just, we'll echo Dr. Russell. I just want to echo your sentiment to the, to the administrative team. I know that they very diligently worked and advocated towards our, what I felt like was one of our very first substantial educational initiatives since COVID. For a long time, we weren't really able to focus in a forward-thinking way, and I feel like this was some of that. Part of the reason that I decided to run for school board and that I have been happy to sit on the school board is because of the initiative and the drive to do public education differently and make changes in a positive way for children and for the future of public education. And I felt as though your team worked really, really hard to bring forward another option that, you know, maybe like you say, is down the pike. But I want to thank them for their professionalism and for their candor and their willingness to be advocates for what they believed was right. And I know a lot of the conversations, especially the, the public conversations, were not always the easiest for them and they, they did not break their professionalism, professionalism or willingness to listen. And I think that that really speaks a great deal to the value that we have in our building administration as well as our district office administration. So on behalf of myself and the board, I thank you. The other thing that I wanted to thank you for was allowing in full transparency multiple public forums and avenues. I know that there were some mixed feelings about how exactly the board was in support of presenting conversations in the public. And I think that in your presenting this and us delaying this part of the conversation, I think that that was the very best thing that could have happened for the community, even though I think it was a little bit of a rough go at times. I think the information gleaned uncovered some really important things that maybe need to get taken care of prior to a grade level realignment. But I think that there would have been a much different outcome without those public conversations. And I know that they weren't, you know, unanimously supported in the, in the avenues that, that they were given. So by the board. So I wanted to make sure that that was also acknowledged, that we really felt, I know in our communication, that it was very important for there to be full transparency with the community and open up dialogue with the community. So I think that paid off. Because we're at a different, a different recommendation now than we were three months ago, so. Okay, so staying the course with the agenda, 2.05 Solicitors' Report. Mr. Subers.
No report.
No report. District Committee Reports. We are in May. So we have a policy on the 12th. We have the Act 48 Committee. We have Mr. Fountain and Mr. Saylor that are going to, that raise their hands to join for that. That happens on the 8th. I see Education Committee of the Whole. It was brought to the attention during agenda planning that there is a conflict with senior awards night. So there has been an ask to move the Education Committee of the Whole meeting to immediately following the Safety and Operations meeting on May 22nd. Does anyone have an issue with that?
The only thing I wanted to add is we have three of our high school administrators who would like to speak on the Viking Zone feedback. There was a survey completed recently by different stakeholder groups. And we also want to talk about education at work and some of the initiatives that are happening there as well as the student handbooks. So it would be really great to have their voices if we could shift it. So we would operate Safety and Operations six to seven and then start Education Committee of the Whole. Mr. Weaver believes he and his team can do that, but that's what we would offer the board on the 22nd.
Mr. Weaver's been running that. I mean, we are like, got safety and ops down to a science now, so. I won't ask so many questions. It's during safety and ops, so we can get to education. Thank you, Jim, for laughing at my joke. Okay, so Ms. Widener will go ahead and publicize that. We have wellness, then would, what would happen with wellness, then?
Wellness will be okay. Mrs. Ducci and I will, will run that. Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. So that brings us to, does anyone have anything else on Board and District Committee Reports? None? Okay. So that brings us to the Consent Agenda. I am not going to skip it this month. Consent Agenda is as presented. We will continue to build it. And then we will move to Section 4, Education. Mr. McKinney.
Absence of Mr. Mitchell tonight. Dr. Russell, who will be presenting the?
So thank you, Mr. McKinney. We have Dr. Hunderhand and Mrs. Ranko, who will join me in presenting the slides that we have for, I'm sorry, I don't want the PDF, for curriculum information this evening and the education updates. So I will start and then invite Dr. Hunderhand, who is our STEM supervisor, and Mrs. Ranko, who is our Humanities Supervisor, to share. But I'll begin with some exciting news for our students, the instructional calendar updates. And while you approve the calendar and what happens in the event of inclement weather, we do formally announce this, the last student day will be June 12th. We use two of the three built-in weather days. So students will gain that one day back. Again, let's all knock on wood and hope there isn't a flood or something between now and the end of the year. But typically at this point in the year, should I erase that from the tape? Typically at this point in the year, we, we try to announce that and just formalize it. We also prepare professional learning for our staff. And so their last day is June 16th, so they will immediately dive into professional learning opportunities on June 17th. But for our students, who we are most excited for, this year is quickly coming to an end and will finally close for them, underclassmen anyway, on the 12th. All right, we'll talk a little bit about some curriculum guides and resources that will be brought to you for approval, and this evening they will be presented and then we will request action for your approval on these documents in June.
Okay. Good evening. Natalie Ranko, Curriculum and Instruction Supervisor for Humanities. As you may know, elementary general music teachers have been piloting two resources this spring, Music Play and Essential Elements. The teachers piloted those resources with students in grades K through five. Both resources have a strong alignment to state standards, multiple resources for differentiating instruction, and a blend of classical and modern music selections. We are recommending the purchase of both resources as they are each tailored toward different age groups. And I'll review a little bit more on the next slide.
Mr. Weaver, could you check to see if the clicker is there for Mrs. Ranko?
Oh, can I just click? It is.
You can be in control.
All right.
If it's on green. So on the side there, there's a switch. It's got to be green. You can try it again. There you go.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Weaver. Music Play is the recommended resource for students in K to 2. Music Play offers simplified lessons that teachers feel are more geared toward this age group. It offers visual games, activities, and songs that teachers reported were highly engaging for our K to 2 learners. It also offers many hands-on and active learning opportunities. Where Essential Elements is the recommended resource that's targeted toward upper elementary grades. This also includes a subscription to Note Flight, which is a music comprehensive, compre- composition, sorry, software. Lessons are geared more toward theory and conceptual understanding of music. It offers resources to support orchestra and band and includes method books for instruments such as recorders and bucket band, which are appropriate for the general music classroom. which are appropriate for the general music classroom. With the purchase of both of these resources, this provides general music teachers with a comprehensive array of materials for students in K to 5. Pebble Go is a database of informational text that was purchased three years ago in 2022. It includes principles and resources for teachers and students. It has audio, read alouds for text selections, vocabulary support, lesson plans. And we have high usage reports for students, teachers, and the librarians. So we are seeking to extend this license for three more years. This year, middle school English teachers collaborated to write Stage 1 curriculum guides for grades 6 through 8. The guides provide a strong foundation, ensuring alignment to standards, and strong rigorous instruction. Into Literature is the recommended resource for grades 6 through 8 as it strongly supports the curriculum. I'll review more details regarding why Into Literature was chosen on the following slides. This is a side-by-side comparison. As you may remember, teachers reviewed multiple resources and chose two to pilot, Into Literature and My Perspectives. After thoughtful evaluation, Into Literature was chosen due to many factors, including those on the rubric and outlined in Policy 108. But in addition to that, the teachers found the content to be engaging for students. It offers strong support for various learners, which there's more details on that specific criteria on the next slide. It offers strong assessment and data analysis tools, teacher and student-friendly platform. Through the pilot of My Perspectives, one of the most frustrating experiences for teachers and students was the cumbersome online platform. And they really struggled to get a handle on that platform. There were a lot of bugs and not a lot of technical assistance for them. Into Literature was chosen in part because of ample support for diverse learners. Into Literature provides support for all students through differentiated instruction, engaging materials, comprehensive writing support, texts of varying levels of complexity. The resource used, in addition, the resource used in K to 5 for reading or English Language Arts is Into Reading, which is also published by the same company, HMH. So with the adoption of Into Literature for grades 6 through 8, that allows a comprehensive, contuitous, continuity of resource, as well as instructional routines and instructional strategies will also be common from grades K to 8. When teachers gathered for the final comparison and review of these two resources, there was 100% consensus by the grade levels to select Into Literature. AP African-American Studies was approved as a new course this year. Teachers in the Social Studies Department got together along with me to review the curriculum that is supported by College Board and have decided to move forward with that as our recommended curriculum. We're also planning to use the same textbook that was already approved and is being used in the Black History course at the high school. This textbook is also approved by College Board for AP courses. Printmaking was also approved as a new course this year. And I wrote curriculum with art teachers from the high school. We are not sure if this course will run next year as we currently have eight students enrolled. If the course runs, we would be seeking approval for a small amount of additional art materials that are specific to printmaking. But at this time, we're not sure if it's going to run. We hope to know by the June board meeting and then would have a list of the additional art materials for printmaking. And then lastly, middle school social studies curriculum and resources were approved in 2022. The 6th grade social studies teachers wanted to add some elements to Stage 1 curriculum. And so we're presenting it for your approval. We don't need to purchase another resource. That was purchased three years ago.
I have some questions.
Yep.
For Pebble?
Yes.
Do we know how many people actively use this tool?
I do have usage reports. I don't want to misquote what they are, but I could get you that information.
Do we know if it's a lot or a little?
It's a lot. Yeah.
For iReady, for the math, we're currently using that in six to eight classrooms. Is that going to increase?
That might be a question for Dr. Hunderhand. So I'm going to turn it over to him. Oh, unless, okay.
No, yeah, go ahead, that's fine.
We'll both stay. Are there any other questions related to?
Yeah, I just had a, I had a question about the differentials from my perspective in Into Literature. When I joined the board is when we started really getting into these types of programs because we went to computer away from books in the programs. So I always find it fascinating when we, you know, we got my perspective because that was the tool to use and it worked well. And now we find issues with it. Have we learned anything over the past few years since we're now one-to-one model and everything is buying these programs? You know, lessons learned when we look into a program? Because although I hear that everyone wants Into Literature, I think, looking back at my notes, that was the same thing with My Perspectives.
Yep.
So, you know, everyone wanted My Perspectives. And now they're like, well, there are a lot of flaws in it. What are the flaws into this program that we're about to spend, you know, $300,000 on? And where can we better, in this RFI process, try to ensure that we don't buy a tool and then a couple of years later go, we now find another new tool and that's $600,000? Because what's happening over the years is these programs just keep getting more and more money. I can guarantee that there'll be a school board here talking about a program in seven years from now, and they're going to be spending $600,000 for a six-year program. It just keeps getting larger and larger. So we can't control that, but we can control the RFI process to understand what's out there and what are these flaws before we jump into it. I know it's not a question that could be answered today. It's a question I've asked quite often when we're talking about these programs because these are just moneymakers for a company.
Yeah. It's a great question and a question that the CNI team can continue to discuss as we iron out the details of how we'll do pilots and evaluation of resources moving forward to have a consistent process, thorough process, and adopt the changes that we've learned.
Is the pilot process not long enough to find out? I mean, you pilot a software to find its flaws. That's the key. But the caveat to that is we're in a classroom. So we don't want to find its flaws in an active classroom.
Right.
Because we're teaching students and we don't want to use students as guinea pigs. So is there another way to cook the spaghetti, right? How can we find the flaws in this tool without having to use real students? Is there another way to debug a software?
That's a great question. I don't know that I know the answer to that, but certainly something we can discuss as a team. Perhaps another way is involving feedback from other districts that are local that are using these programs to gather what their experience has been with the program and what the bugs were so that we can maybe mitigate those.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Dr. Hunderhand.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Main thing on the agenda as it relates to STEM is the K-5 Math curriculum. So I just want to say, we tried to incorporate as many teachers as possible in this curriculum writing process. The curriculum was last updated in 2017. A lot of instructional practices have changed since then. And we talk often about the idea of a guaranteed viable curriculum. And that's one of the things that we wanted to create here within K-5 Math. And so we started out by talking to all teachers at the elementary level and having them identify priority standards individually. And then they worked with their colleagues within each of the schools to build consensus on those. And then we had that data and we brought it together to the curriculum team, which was a smaller group of teachers, which was representative of all the elementary schools, of all the grade levels as well. And they looked at the work that all their colleagues had done. And we built consensus as to what teachers felt like were the most important skills at each grade level. We then mapped them out and we looked at them vertically as well to see how each of the skills relates and builds upon at the next level. So a lot of hard work and effort went into this process. We made those decisions based upon three criteria mainly. Readiness, does it prepare students for the next level? Does the skill and knowledge have endurance? Does it translate, in other words, into like real-life skills or help them at the high school level? And does it have a leverage into other content areas that the teachers teach to? So also with that, too, teachers at the elementary level were working with two different resources. So we had teachers who were piloting iReady and then also teachers who were continuing with the last year of Math in Focus. And so we had their input, too, within this. And we propose using iReady. So that's where we'd like to go as a team. We feel that iReady, number one, it builds continuity across grade levels. It's something that the middle school already employs. And we're looking to get, we're looking for a four-year, four-year contract with iReady is what we would like because that would align with what the middle school currently has with iReady, too. So iReady offers some fascinating stuff and some really things that are different and relevant to today's teaching. So number one, they offer personalized learning, which creates learning paths for each student individually. So it is a way to provide intervention for kids, but also provides them with enrichment, too. So it dials directly into each individual student. It provides diagnostics for teachers, so that's real-time data that they can use. And it shows how students are growing. And teachers can then alter their lessons and adapt their lessons based upon that data. Within this as well, I know that it does have a large cost here associated with it. But iReady, there's also professional learning that's incorporated within this cost, too. It provides teachers and students with digital access to all the resources within iReady and that personalized instruction there, too, and consumable. So it gives kids workbooks as well. So it's four years of all that included. We also feel that grades 6 through 8, who again are already utilizing iReady, one component that is currently missing is that personalized instruction. And so that's really one of the main things that iReady is known for, is this personalized instruction, which again is the intervention and enrichment that dials really into each individual kid. So that's something we would like to incorporate as well. So we're asking the board as well for that. For high school math, math has been like a main focus this year, if you can't tell. Teachers would like, and the team would like, I'm sorry, mathematics. So Mathematic is a resource that is free. It's available online. It provides teachers with lessons that are actually created by former teachers. But the cost is associated with access to their assessment platform. So it allows teachers already to kind of use the lessons and the units. And they're aligned from Algebra 1 all the way up into Precalculus. Our AP Stats and AP Calculus courses are already utilizing this resource. And so we were looking for alignment of resource across the different courses at the high school level as well. So that's why we're proposing this, too. I'm going to pause here because that does it with the math section. So if anyone has any questions about math, I'll be happy to take those.
I just have a couple. If we could just, for the record, because this is saved in Board Docs, I assume, Slide 17, which is the K through 5 math, iReady costs is, it's the 482 over four years?
Yes.
Yeah. So just so, because the other, the English had the year allotment, so we could just put the four years in there.
I'm sorry about that. Yes. And also that would be the same for the 6 to 8 math, too.
Yeah. Yeah, at the very bottom. The same thing for the next slide as well. And then Desmo's?
Is a one-year, that's one-year.
That's it. We just want to do that for one year.
Yes, it's one-year renewable. That's how that works.
Could you talk a little bit about, are you done, Mr. Saylor? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Could you talk a little bit about the diagnostic for the iReady? Just so folks understand kind of what those reports look like?
Yep.
And then also how frequently there are adjustments happening within buildings for shuffling of targeted learning groups for intervention? Like, does it happen quarterly? Like, let's sit down and regroup and we'll, you know, we'll have our math club kids come and now, and now it's this bucket?
Sure. So first, iReady is all, we offer the diagnostic three times a year. So once in the fall, once in the winter, and once in the spring. And that first one is used as a universal screener. So it's given to all, they're actually, it's all, all three times it's given to all kids. But the first time, it's a screener of students who might use, who might be in need of an intervention, right? And so I believe students, that data is constantly looked at. But I believe students are at least in an intervention for nine weeks, is what I want to say. And those are fluid groups, so they are subject to change, right? Based upon student need. But I believe they're in those groups for nine weeks across schools.
And then their progress is tracked based on their pathways?
Absolutely.
And so then they either can, they dip in or dip out based on the progress that they're making on an individual subject, subject area, I guess I should say.
Yeah. So first off, it gives you data into all of the different, like strands of math. So, you know, Algebraic Skills, Geometry, Number Sense, Measurement. And then what it does is, yeah, it tracks growth. So there's progress monitoring that can happen along those lines as well. So as a kid takes their diagnostic, their first diagnostic, it then recommends a learning path for them as well, based upon student need. And teachers can do progress monitoring with all of their students. And as a student is working on their personalized instruction, for instance, if a student is getting questions correct, it raises the level of rigor. If a student is getting questions incorrect, it dials into the specific skill gaps and addresses those. And if, for say, like, I am a student and I'm having difficulty with Algebraic concepts and I'm continuing to get them wrong, it'll shut that skill off and it'll flag the teacher. So then the teacher can then, you know, pull a kid and work with them in small group instruction specifically to that skill as well.
And that happens in real time, independent of the cyclical?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Yep. Yeah. So that's happening every day in daily instruction. iReady recommends that students, they have research on this that says basically if a student uses that personalized instruction for between like 40 and 45 minutes a week, that's the sweet spot. They show growth, more growth than the average student. And we're actually seeing that as well. So for instance, between our fall diagnostic and our winter one, students across all six of our schools, actually, were in that top-right quadrant, which shows growth and achievement.
That's great. And I, yeah, I didn't even think to ask for screen grabs to be incorporated. But it's interesting to see based, you know, from first grade, for example, to fifth grade, how different, but yet still user-friendly as an interface goes, how individualized it is per grade and then also per student's path. So I think it's really helpful. I don't know, maybe that can be some, just some, people have no idea what, when you're saying iReady. They've never seen any child like go through the module of it. So I think it would be helpful to just be able to have a visualization of what that really looks like.
Thank you.
For the, for the board as a whole. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions about math, we did then bring the Technology Department at the high school together as well to write curriculum for a course that is taking the place of, a course of a similar name from Project Lead the Way. So if you remember, I think it was back in... So if you remember, I think it was back in, it may have been November. This was talked about how we were pulling away from Project Lead the Way and then the team was going to create a new course in its place. This is the course that they've created. So I mentioned the idea of a guaranteed viable curriculum prior when we were talking about math. Here it was nice and easy. We had three teachers. So, you know, it makes it a lot more simpler to have that guaranteed experience across classrooms when all three teachers are involved in this process. And they were a fun group too. So anyway, this group, they, we built units within here. And the units talk about symbol machines and fluid power. Students are learning about electricity. And then robotics and AI and automation as well. So it's definitely including some of this forward thinking. And then it's also incorporating the steel standards too, which are the new Pennsylvania Science, Technology and Engineering Standards. And so we did some professional development there and teachers are also incorporating science and engineering practices within each of the lessons and units too, which are like asking questions, planning, carrying out investigations, analyzing data, developing and using models, using math, constructing explanations from arguments and arguments from evidence. Also incorporating systems thinking within there too, creativity, collaboration. So a lot of like the softer skills too, and also the skills that are actually used by engineers are being incorporated within these units. Any questions? Okay. Well, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have four point zero two. Approval of motion, a request to approve a virtual instruction agreement we currently have with Warren County School District. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
Yeah, the Why was the twenty-one contract attached? Was it just to review it?
That same contract automatically renews, presuming the board approves. They don't change their language.
Any further questions, comments or concerns? Not hearing anything. We'll move that to consent. Four point zero three. Motion to approve virtual learning high school agreement. Any questions, comments, concerns? Not hearing any. We shall move that to consent. Four point zero four. Motion to ratify asynchronous virtual day. Any questions, comments or concerns? Not hearing any. Let's move that to consent. Four point zero five. Motion to approve field trips. Any questions, comments or concerns? Not hearing any. We shall move that to consent. And four point zero six is the enrollment report attached. That is my section.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Section five, business, Mr. Fountain.
I will look to Mr. Weaver and say, take it away.
Right hand up. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Tonight's finance committee, the whole, I'll have a, we'll review the projection. We have some positive influence on the projection. We have a recommendation for the use of unassigned fund balance. And we'll set standards for tonight's approval of the preliminary general fund budget. We'll have a quick food service discussion and then we'll just quickly bring the board up to speed on an MOU reviewing for the bus patrol process, which is currently engaged and active. So for tonight's projection, we had some intense conversation and review between Mrs. Hurd and myself. We've made some changes to the expenditure side. We're actually about three hundred and fifty thousand, a little bit less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what we presented for our projection, which means that generates an additional expectation of a projection of a fund balance and an unassigned fund balance of what eight point one two one million, which is a positive influence because that gives us and gets us closer to the six percent. We are recommending because of this positive influence, a, the use of three hundred thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance. If you recall, last month, we had some conversation about that. And I was a little unsure where that would go. We have another month of concrete evidence now in the projection, which gives us confidence moving forward to recommend the use of that three hundred thousand dollars. Again, that will put us at about five point nine two percent of expected expenditures for next year. That's just the way that the act one index hits it. And this sets us up in a little bit of a better light than we were last month. So the recommendation is for three hundred thousand dollars.
Jim?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. You said we're at five point nine two, is that correct?
Of the expenditures for next year, yes.
Okay, that, that's better. Still not six.
That's correct.
Do you foresee any possible improvement of that?
So part of our conversation, we hit the expenditures really hard from April to May. A big moment for us happens on Wednesday, which is the Fed interest rate. If the Fed maintains that rate, we have a lot of three-month ninety-day investments coming off in May. If you, if you look at the interest report, the interest earnings report, which you'll see next week. A lot of those are set by months of a time, ninety, ninety days, three months is coming up for a number of different investments. So if that interest rate holds, the interest rate that we get on investments, that may positively influence the projection, which would mean then that that percentage would be a little bit better then. Possibly. We could go maybe instead of three hundred, maybe three hundred and fifty thousand. But for tonight's preliminary general fund budget approval, I think the five point nine two percent is a good, good spot to stick. And we've got a couple of things that we're monitoring. So that unassigned fund balance may get closer to that six percent. Even with additional uses of unassigned fund balance in June, when we set final, final budget approval. So we are aware of that. We're watching that and we're monitoring that. The Fed interest rate is one big thing that we're, we're looking at.
What if they lower the rate?
So if they lower the rate, then our projection will hold more likely than that. We'll just say, okay, well, we're not going to mess around with that because we're not guaranteed that extra couple sixty days of interest earnings at, at the higher rate.
So it's on, you're basically almost there then if six was our magic number.
Six is definitely the magic number. That would certainly make the finance committee, Jamie Doyle, a little bit happier. In case, remember, that's an important number for us if, in case we're going out to issue bonds. Right now, we don't foresee bonds for the rest of this calendar year. That may change next year, but we don't know that.
Is there an ideal number that you would be looking for?
So the ideal number in the industry is twelve percent.
Which is basically impossible for us because of law and we just don't have that big pot of money to sit on.
Yes. And that twelve percent would only give us two months worth of operating cash flow in case of emergency.
So in an ideal world, would you prefer to be pushing closer to the eight percent? So you'd look at having to move out on assigned fund balances as we've done in the past?
Absolutely. Philosophically, that would give, that would give myself a little bit of comfort knowing that when we budget, we take some guesses, educated guesses, but they don't always pan out.
So at this point, we're say two percent, two percent off of what you would consider an ideal?
Jamie's number has been six in the past, correct?
Yes.
What was the unassigned fund balance three years ago? Do you remember?
That, I, I could get that information for you.
I was just curious if you, okay. What, what would, what's the number in dollars for that point zero eight percent? Any idea?
I, I probably did it. I just don't have it with me. I could get that as well.
I could get, I'll play around with my calculator.
One last question.
True, absolutely.
You said that you did, most of this is from squeezing the expenditure side?
Yes.
Okay. So in theory, the income side going plus or minus would also have an effect on that as well?
It, it would.
But you did squeeze
We've been pretty aggressive.
We can control the expenses more than we can the income, obviously.
Correct. Correct. As, as the way that we, we look at that, yes. Contractual obligations have to be met, all of those processes. And we have been, we've stepped out of our comfort zone with revenues since November, really. We've looked at that, earned income tax isn't going up by two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand. In other words, we didn't cut ourselves short and then build it up. We went to where we are and where we think we're going to end up at the sixteen million right away. And we've had very little adjustment to that. So what we've done, and that's been an area of growth for us over the years, as we become comfortable with where that number is. We all know from an economic perspective, that's driven by what people make is what they tend to pay in. So we're, we've been trying to keep a positive outlook. We know that we're going to be at the sixteen million and we've said that since November, really. And so we've kind of stepped out of our comfort zone from a revenue perspective. That's why I think we haven't been as open to changes from a revenue perspective. And of course, the governor's budget, we know it went through that process. And we were cautioned by PASBO and PSBA to watch some of those adequacy monies that we didn't get, we didn't qualify for. So we didn't really have to worry about that. We were also told that our numbers are historically low from an increase perspective. That will pretty much be a good place to start for school districts to consider. And that's where we're at. So we've taken that off as well. We're not holding that at zero like we have in the past. We've gone to right where the professional organizations say that we've been. And that was a couple of months ago as well. So any areas in revenues, interest earnings, earned income tax, real estate transfer taxes, those types of things that are driven by the economic power of what the Perkioman Valley School District is. We've kind of gone out and we've made our statement, this is where we're at. Very little movement. That's our, in our expectation. And again, one of the consistencies of that is the fact that our taxpayers pay their bills. We know that. We're, we're a huge benefactor for that because they are consistent in paying their bills.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that recommendation? Again, the recommendation is made to get us to an approval for tonight's preliminary general fund budget approval because it's part of the process. And it's, it's requested tonight, specific to meet the thirty-day criteria before we have final budget approval in June. That's why those dates are important. It is a step in the, in the right direction. And if things turn positive, certainly we'll have additional conversations about uses of unassigned fund balance. But the last thing I want to do as the business administrator of a school district is put us in some sort of a situation where it's not comfortable.
I had one last question.
Absolutely.
Seven point four percent in two thousand twenty-two, when the board passed that budget. It was eight, over eight percent the year prior. I, I know I asked this earlier in the year. At what point do we stop using the unassigned fund balances and try to have a tighter budget? We're not going to be able to use it much longer. We're not going to be able to use it next year at all because it's already under six if this, if this motion passes. When, when do we start to realize that? You know, we, we, we put a little ladder over a cliff and we're just climbing down.
So I can certainly appreciate that. Remember, there's two variables to that. One is the amount of unassigned fund balance, but the other one is how much are our expenditures? And so those expenditures have, have gone up as well. Con, contracts, contractual obligations, all of those things. And I think it's important for us to consider those. Absolutely.
Yeah. And something that's, doesn't compute in my mind since I've been on this board is, and we just heard today, we're going to have a thousand less students over a period of time. Hundred, excuse me, a couple hundred less students. We've had a thousand less students from the previous ten years. Budgets don't go like this. Budgets go like this. Less students, students go down, school budgets go up. Fund balance now is going down to a number that makes some of us pause.
Yep. And it makes us pause as well, but remember
I'll be fixed. We could have someone in Skippack win the lottery, big tax payout goes, we get some extra revenue. That's great, right?
There have been other earned, earned income tax surprises that we have had.
Correct.
Some hefty bonuses over the years, yes. But the other component to that is although the enrollment is going down, as Dr. Russell has mentioned in the past, the way that we educate our students has changed. And as a matter of fact, our staff hasn't gone down. Our staff has gone up and our paraprofessionals have gone up. And that's all in the essence of trying to get the best education to our students. So that is correct. While those, the students are going down, the needs of the students and the way that we educate are changing. And that's kind of, you know, getting into the whole educational process of what does it take to actually educate a student?
And I guess, Jim, just to, to that point though, that you've made, and although enrollment is going down, in terms of our revenue stream and the burden falling on taxpayers, you don't have to have a student in order to pay taxes into the school districts as, as a majority of our tax base doesn't. So I, I think that's important to note and obviously transfer tax, things like that, all of that. As long as the housing market stays as a seller's market, I think that that bodes very well for the district in general in terms of those revenue streams.
I agree. And we'll always say, you know, we're Perkioman Valley, we're different in our makeup and the way that we approach and compare ourselves. A third, almost fifty percent of our assessed value is not taxable. Now that's because of the one point eight billion dollars of the Phoenix. But still that's on the tax rolls and that's a big fat zero. We don't get anything for fifteen hundred acres in the middle of our school district. We don't even get ten dollars an acre. We don't get any of that. That makes us unique in that perspective. So that, again, our taxpayers pay an unfair burden. And that is Perkioman Valley School District. And we know that. Doesn't mean that we don't try to keep our budget as thin as possible though. We do, we really do try the best we can to make sure it's fair and it's fair to everybody. Fair for the education of the student, fair for the staff that works it and fair for the taxpayers that don't have students in our district. Any other questions? Again, this is approval tonight, doesn't mean we're done. We still have a lot of work to do. So there is a motion tonight for the three hundred thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance. Okay, moving on to the actual budget for approval, preliminary budget approval tonight. There are no changes on the revenue side. We just talked about that because things are tight. And we feel very firm with those ideas. One hundred and thirty-three million, zero four zero, zero twenty-seven. Breakdown local, state and federal. Again, there are those alternative revenues that we talk about. Expenditures for tonight, we do have some changes. We do have, we finalized the buck spot at a two point oh percent. That was a conversation that we did have with Mr. McGill, Mr. Moran, Dr. Russell and myself. So as a result of that third look number going in at the two percent, we actually deducted from our projected expenditures, one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So that's a positive influence. We had one final adjustment for the athletics budget and you'll see a little bit more detail on the interactive. We had to add an additional thirty thousand dollars because of referee fees and for tournament fees specific to a couple of programs that we have, bowling and wrestling. They have less actual meets, so to speak, and they have more tournaments. So there are more, there are more costs for those sports and activities to get better competition. So total adjustment is a negative eighty-seven thousand dollars. And here is a quick review of, if you get stuck in a conversation, you want to have a conversation. The red is what we changed, twenty-five thousand dollars for dues and fees specific for the tournament down below. And the five thousand dollars for the rentals for the golf and the bowling, those rental fees are going up. So the interactive shows a shortfall of three million, eighty thousand, one fifty-five. To break that down, that is a three point seven nine percent preliminary general fund budget approval request. And what that shows is for the average taxpayer, this is how we always break it down. The average taxpayer at a home assessed at one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it's a two hundred and fifty-four dollar increase. It is not a small increase, but it is an increase nonetheless. Keep in mind, the way that you get the value of your house is you take the assessed value, you divide it by the common level Keep in mind, the way that you get the value of your house is you take the assessed value, you divide it by the common level ratio, which is about a point three two at this point in time, and that will give you what the average assessed value, or the average home value is. That assessment comes from the Montgomery County Assessment Board. We continue to watch any last minute adjustments. Again, Wednesday's a big day for us from a revenue perspective. And then we'll see what happens with the state budget. And remember, we take care of our business, we pass our budget. And then if the, the Commonwealth actually comes forward with additional monies, we can set those aside for, as reserves into the future and utilize them as future offset for tax increases. There's only one more budget step from a board perspective, and that will be the final budget approval on June ninth. Once we get tonight's budget, the preliminary budget approved, that's it, just one stop for June ninth. Okay, any questions on proposing the preliminary general fund budget at a three point seven nine percent with a promise to continue to review revenues and expenditures to see if we can find some other adjustments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the food service. The food service department and the food service fund is not required by the state for us to go through a budget process. Typically, what we do is we hit the food service projection and where we're at for the current year about this time of year. This helps set up the conversation for price increases or keeping the prices the same. We are coming forward with the fact that we are projecting we'll have a seventy-five thousand dollar loss and our food service program overall for twenty-four, twenty-five, and that's all. Any conversation, we can continue that in June? Again, we're not required by law to have that, but we do need to get some sort of an idea of where we're at when we bring forward some pricing recommendations for next school year. And we'll do that in June. Any questions on that? Kelsey is here. She's done a wonderful job this year. I know she got some kudos for the cookies, which I don't have, but. Joe's over there, I don't think there'll be any left. But anyway, from a food service perspective, I think we're still in pretty good shape. And we'll bring forward the fund balances and all that kind of stuff, so you know where we're at in June. I just wanted to get this information out there, so you're aware that this conversation will be had. Any questions about the food service at this point in time? Okay, just a note, we continue to work on an MOU agreement for bus patrol. We've been working with Fox Rothschild, Dave Comer has been our go-to. We have a document that we forwarded to both Lower Frederick and Collegeville Borough. And just as a little side note, we asked if they were interested several months ago, and they were not at that point in time. But since we said go and we hit the approval button, we've been getting some violations, and then they re-engaged in conversations and said, hey, maybe we're interested in that. So it's great to have a partner with us. And so we're almost done with a draft form, and we hope to have it for next Monday night's meeting. Again, nothing earth shattering, this is not a revenue trend setter for us. This is more about the safety of the, of the students on our buses. Any questions on that? Again, we hope to have the MOU in place by next Monday.
Jim, just a quick question. Have there been any additional violations since we last met with safety and operations? Just want to get an idea of the scope of how well this is working.
Chief Miller? It has a lot of promise. Okay, thank you, Mr. Liggett. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weaver. If we look at the rest of this, then it goes to five point oh two, which is requesting action. So this is a motion to use unassigned fund balances, balances as presented. Do I have a motion? NSO move. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second. Did you hear me, I said second? Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
A discussion.
Is there any discussion?
I'm, I'm just, I'm not in favor of getting, using, getting this under six percent. I know it's small, I would like to see it at six percent. I also am going to continue to say, we're looking at a forty-five percent tax increase year over year. You know, at some point, we need to start figuring out ways to eliminate items from the budget. Forty-five percent, two point five nine to three point seven nine. We're, we're at three point seven nine because we're using the three hundred thousand from unassigned fund balance. We really should be at four. It's a huge tax increase from one year to the next, and it's, it's difficult to swallow. And I don't, you know, we do a lot of talking about a lot of things, but we need to start, as a school board, digging into our budgets and figuring out ways, we just don't hit this high cap number every year.
Anyone else?
Oh, that's where a roll call? Oh, sorry, good.
I'm sorry, I, I have to agree with at least the sentiment there, that we do. We need to be looking at what's going on from the expenditures point of view, because like, for example, this year, we're, we've self capped at four percent by passing the Act One Index. And now we have our tax rate here and is trying to close that gap. The unassigned fund balance is obviously a tool we can use, but as Mr. Weaver said, you know, it's something, he would, not try to put too many words in your mouth, Jim, but the closer we are to eight, the better off we are from a long-term financial point of view and from the bond market. So considering that it's a, what, point zero eight difference right now? As a percentage to get from five point nine two to six. I, I understand Mr. Saylor's point. We're very close.
Does anyone have anything else to add? Ms. Widener, Mr. Saylor has asked for a roll call vote.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Liggett?
No.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Dr. Sadler?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item five point oh three, another motion requesting action tonight. Motion to approve proposed final twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget, NSO move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Five point oh four, approval for memorandum. Is there any discussion additionally to avoid moving that from, to consent? Seeing none, move to consent.
If I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Fountain. I'm sorry, you're on item five dot zero four. I'm going to request in advance of five dot zero five that the board hold that from consent.
Okay.
Because we want to double check the numbers of individuals with APC versus the district.
Okay.
Thank you.
So five point oh four will move to consent, five point oh five, we will jump right over that one. Five point oh six, approval of elevator shaft repairs at the high school. Any discussion about that? Did I do right?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean for you to skip over the item in the event the board had any conversation or questions about it. I just wanted to suggest it be held off consent.
Okay.
Okay. This is for five point oh?
Five.
Five. So I'll ask that it be pulled from consent.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, five point oh six, once again, I'll get it right this time. Elevator shaft repairs at the high school, any debate or discussion on that? We will move that to consent. Five point oh seven, approval of vendor for ADA curb ramps. Any additional discussion? Move that to consent. Approval of updated facilities software. Additional discussion? Move that to consent. After that movement to consent, everything down to five sixteen is either removed or on consent already. Five point one six, approval of Rotary Garden Grant. Move that to consent. Number seventeen and eighteen are both placeholders, and the report has been shown. That ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain, Mr. Saylor, Section Six, payment of bills.
Payment of bills will be done on May twelfth, that ends my section.
Thank you. Dr. Sadler, Section Seven, professional personnel.
Seven point zero one and seven point zero two are both on consent. Seven point zero three is a placeholder for May twelfth. Seven point zero four and seven, seven point zero five are on consent. Seven point zero six is a motion to approve to create a licensed social worker position. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to hold that off consent.
Seven point zero seven is the motion to approve to create a teacher on special assignment position. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to hold that off consent.
Seven point zero eight is a motion to approve a leave of absence. Do we have any questions or comments about that? That will move to consent. Seven point zero nine is a motion to approve a separation and release of agreement. Do we have any questions or comments about that? That will go on to consent as well. That ends my, ends my section.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler. Dr. Weston is not feeling well this evening, I will work on support personnel for him. Eight point oh one, two, and three are on consent. Eight point oh four, approval of separation and release agreement. Are any questions? We'll move eight point oh four to consent, and that ends. I don't see it there on the, it's not attached.
I'm sorry, Ms. White, I would ask that the board hold that from consent.
Hold that off consent.
Yeah, I would encourage it.
Until it's attached, no problem. And so that ends Section Eight, support personnel. Mr. Liggett, governance, Section Nine.
Thank you. Nine point zero one, there are seven policies attached for first reading. Nine point zero two, there are policies attached for second reading and approval for next week. Without objection, we'd move that to consent. Nine point zero three is for the approval of voting delegates for PSBA. Ms. White, do we?
Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding that? The approval is essentially, it's procedural.
No problem, then let's just move that to consent then, unless there's any other objections. There's no names on it.
I'm sorry, I thought it was that.
That's kind of why I was.
I thought, I thought that it was the other form that Doc, that Ms. White.
This isn't, this isn't for the MCIU vote, this is for PSBA.
Correct. So we would go ahead and then nominate a voting member. Does anyone want to be a voting member? If no one, it can be me.
Apologize, what was the question? We didn't.
Can nominate up to three people to be voting members for PSBA.
For a specific conference at Calahari.
Yeah, I've done that before, I'm out.
But you get to go on the water slide.
Trust me, they don't want me to come into another one.
Would anyone else like to participate?
I'm sorry, I'm not available for that, so I would not be able to.
Okay.
Can we?
You know you're not available on October twenty-first?
I know that I have a relatively new job that I need to not take days off of when I don't need to, that I. I probably could, but I could check into that later. Why don't we do, since now the board is aware of this, we don't have to take action on this tonight? Let us remove this from consent agenda, and that gives us a week.
And then we can nominate up to three, but I will, I will offer to be able to participate in that.
Have they removed their virtual option this year?
I do think that there is a virtual option still.
How do you go on the water slide?
I thought they moved it to in person this year.
Only in person?
That's what I thought.
I thought that I had read something different, but I might be conflating the two. Yep, we'll follow up and we'll, we'll ask for another raise of the hand. We don't need to fight, we don't need to fight over the three positions. We can see what, if Dr. Weston and Dr. Campley would love to join the fun.
I'd rather see the fight, but you know, that's me.
Well, we can do that next week.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Mr. Liggett, if it is a virtual thing, I can, more than happy to come by your house and throw water on you as you're watching.
Thanks, Doc, appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll hold that for next week, then.
All right, very good.
Nine point oh four.
Thank you. Sorry, I still have, I still have water, virtual water in my eyes.
Yeah, okay, got it.
This is a motion to approve the PSBA membership for the board. If there's no discussion, like to move that consent. And the approval of the board treasurer and secretaries, that should be moved to consent without objection, and that would end my section.
Thank you so much, Mr. Liggett. Sorry about that on, for nine point oh three, I was thinking about the other.
The MCIU.
Yeah, the MCIU, correct. Okay, that brings us to Section Ten, closing items. And with that, I open the floor again, comments from the audience. The board affords the audience comments on any topic for up to three minutes. Please, please state your name and municipality, and I open the floor.
Good evening, this is Judy Lofton from Skibek. I'd like to talk for a moment about the budget and the need to ensure that we are balancing revenues and expenditures. And I think it's important when you look historically at where we are and how we got to the point where we are now. So if you look back at last year, last year, we used, the district used a total of one point five five one mil, excuse me, million dollars of total, total fund balance. That includes what came out of the unassigned fund balance of a million dollars, plus our debt service and Peasars Reserve, and we had a two point five nine percent tax increase. If you look back the year before that, then you will see that the twenty-three, twenty-four year budget, we actually used two million dollars of our unassigned fund balance and wound up with just a one percent tax increase. So, you know, using, in, in previous years, we pulled millions of dollars out of our unassigned fund balance and wound up with a much lower tax increase. And the year before that, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which would have been voted on in June of twenty-two, we used two point three four five million dollars. So over two million dollars more than what's being proposed by administration for this year. And along with that, we actually saw that the Peasars that the district needed to pay was reduced by three hundred thousand dollars. Usually every year for the past, I don't know, two decades, it's gone up by hundreds of thousands of dollars. But that year, we actually had a reprieve of two hundred thousand dollars. So when you look historically at the addition of a police force, you look at the addition of a full day K, you look at the use of close to two and a half million dollars in fund balance paired with a lower tax increase, that's where we wound up where we are now. And so unfortunately, over the past couple of years, the district did dig itself a little bit of a hole that it went into. And I do hope that in the future, when we undertake these initiatives to enhance our school district, we do the responsible thing with our finances and make sure that we're not creating holes for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Thank you. I don't think that microphone is on.
All right. My name is Anne Bridy. I live in Lower Frederick Township. So regarding the realignment topic, in my professional life, when I have a question, I go to the literature. So when this topic came up, I headed to the literature to read about grade span configurations and saw a lot of different ideas. One of the things that really hit me was a number of ways that students in K through eight schools tended to develop better self-esteem and self-capability. One specific item was that students in a middle school tended to be graded more stringently than students in a K through eight. So their grades were lower than they were in elementary school, and it didn't necessarily indicate that they learned any less or were performing more poorly, but long-term, it really impacted their perception of their intelligence and academic ability. So that sort of takes me forward to, I have a middle schooler. I hate middle school. I've had a number of friends, including friends who are middle school teachers over the years, say middle school's the worst. In reading the literature, middle school was intended to be a really unique environment that addressed the unique needs of this age group. Instead of the junior high concept, that was really like a little junior high. Everything that I read really indicated that middle school was never implemented in the way it was intended to be, and modern-day middle school tends to be a little junior high in a lot of ways. So now's not the time for this community to move forward with the realignment, but that doesn't mean that we have to stay in the status quo. Through these discussions, we did talk about, you know, a number of opportunities or challenges existing in the middle school. So perhaps not moving forward with the realignment, but now is a time to evaluate the middle schools, see what aspects we can make that are really more in line with the way middle school was intended to be. That unique environment that meets the needs of these rapidly changing, unique people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing else from the audience. 10.02, comments from board members. I open the table. Okay, I reiterate Mr. Lee's comments with regard to Mr. Cook and his family. It was a very sad day for the community, and I am grateful that we were able to afford our middle and high school levels on asynchronous day with that flexibility to allow for our staff and very, very many students to be able to participate in remembering him. And I know that a lot of administrators were there as well, as well as board members. So we continue to keep the Cook family in our prayers and our thoughts, and so I was glad to hear Mr. Lee's make that comment. So that was very, that was very nice of him to do that. And then the only other thing I would say was good luck to all of our high school students that are about to embark on AP season. And I think that's pretty much it. We'll see, see everybody next week, from, from my point of view, anyway. Does anyone have anything else? All right. Nope, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Liggett.
Yeah, you know, I thought-
Last word, go ahead.
I thought about it, and I'd get in trouble for this. I hope to see a lot of people coming out tomorrow night for the lacrosse playoffs. The varsity team is looking for a good win tomorrow night and would love to hear your support.
Cheers. That's wonderful. Thank you for the plug. Okay, very good. And with that, 10.03, notice of video disclaimer, and 10.04 is adjournment. Have a great night, everybody. See everybody next week.